This conference will now be recorded.
That's still sexy.
Oh, that's your complaint?
You guys ready? Everybody's ready?
Yep, you ready? Ready as you're gonna get.
Clerk, please start the recording. Today is Wednesday, September 11th, 2024, and I'd like to call today's city council meeting into order. If we can all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Amen.
On this day in 2001, 2,977 people were viciously murdered by terrorist acts. With that, I'd like to take two minutes of silence to remember those lost. Thank you. Clerk, may I please have roll call?
Councilmember Fox.
Present.
Councilmember Boyle.
Here.
Councilmember Casper.
Here.
Councilmember Leha.
Here.
Councilmember Sermini.
Present.
Mayor Strobin.
Here.
We do have a presentation tonight. Ms. Tracy Coleman will be presenting the road repair cost comparison. Tracy? She's on virtually, right?
I'm here. Apologize for that. I had to get my camera going. You can see, can you guys see me? Can you hear me? Yes. I can hear you. You can't see me?
Well, we're looking at your presentation, so would you like us to see the presentation? Or you?
The presentation is fine, but I'll turn my camera off if I don't need to be seen, so I'll go ahead.
Okay. Thanks.
Yeah. Okay, so this presentation is basically, I wanted to give the public and the council members an idea of what it is, what our roads are here in Woodland and what the options are as far as maintenance of roads as the Transportation Benefit District has come in question. So I wanted to just educate the public and educate the council members as to what options you have. The first option, obviously, is you never have to do anything. Then after that, there's three other options, depending on the type of road or what product you want to have in your city. So I've done a summary of three surface repair options. The first one is going to be chip seal. The second one is a grind and overlaying, and the fourth, the third one is a full-depth reclamation. I just want to make sure you guys can hear me okay before I proceed.
We can hear you.
Great, okay. So we'll start out with the most, the least expensive option that you can do in a city to maintain a road, least expensive outside of a slurry seal, which basically makes the road look pretty, and that's about it. So, and this is called a chip seal. And most of you are familiar with it. The county uses chip seal on the majority of their roads in the counties. And so when you drive around, most people complain about when you use chip seal that it damages my car, and there's rock chips all over the road, and there's oil now on my car, so on and so forth. But what chip seal is, is it basically, it's a two-step process, and it includes an application of an asphalt emulsion and then a layer of crushed rock. And then what it does, it has to sit there for a while, and then you can come back through with a street sweeper and sweep up the remainder of the rock, but it does require the people to drive slower in the area for a couple days until you can get it cleaned up. And that's the first option you have in order to do road maintenance in your town. With that being said, when you look at chip seal, and what I did on a comparison is I looked at 24-foot wide road, which is a typical lane width within a municipality, and I looked at what the cost index was for, the engineering cost index, and what the current estimates that have been in this last year for chip seal within the area of Clark and Calitz County. And I figured out the price per ton, how many, how much per mile, so on and so forth. So for a chip seal, when you break it all down, I kind of gave you the breakdown there, but I just want to let you know, I highlighted the bottom line number. You're looking at about $13.50 per linear foot if you want to chip seal your roads, okay? So now we'll go to the next option that you would have available as far as council and the citizens. If you don't want to do a chip seal, the next thing you'd want to do is you want to do a grind and overlay. And basically, what a grind and overlay is, it's, and I've shown you pictures in here of what they are as well. You can see the photos, I don't see it up there. There we go. What a grind and overlay does is a technique that basically removes a distressed surface area. So when you go and you see a lot of alligator cracking, so on and so forth in the neighborhood, your road's kind of shot at that point. So you really need to grind up the asphalt. You usually grind up the first two inches of asphalt, and then you re-overlay it with a large milling machine. So as this machine goes through it, grinds it, and then it relays it down. And then what that does is it looks like brand-new asphalt on the road. So that's, that's the second option that you have. Most people like that. They're like, oh, I got a new road. But you're actually using your existing road surface to do that. So when you do that, it's, it basically, it's called a mill and fill. And if you're doing that throughout your city, it costs $67 a linear foot for a grind and overlay. This is pretty typical if your roads are in halfway decent condition, meaning that you have at least two inches of asphalt, and you have a lot of alligator, but you've actually gone in there and you've done some crack seal on the alligator, allergating, so you can actually use that asphalt. This is the option that I would recommend, and it's kind of the most common in the area. Then you get to the third option, and that is a full-depth reclamation. This is where you typically, you have to do this where you have a lot of heavy truck traffic, and you have a lot of rutting in the roads, the road's shot. You really can't do a grind and overlay. It either has too little asphalt, or the asphalt is worn to the point of no return. So what you would do on this is you actually tear up all the asphalt, you haul it away, you redo your layers of your base, your subgrade of your road, and then what you do is you bring in brand-new asphalt and lay it over the top, and you typically do a minimum of three inches to four inches is what you'd want in there, an absolute minimum. So when you're, when you're looking at that, you're looking at a cost of $96 a linear foot. So when you're going to do a full-depth reclamation, and you usually have to close your road off at least one lane at a time. You actually do for this and/or grind and overlay as well. So, but these are the three cost options that the city would be looking at to maintain their roads. So then if you go to the next slide, I thought, okay, let me give you a cost comparison of roads that I just sent out for a bid, not a bid, excuse me, for a grant, because I know that we had a total of $150,000 in our budget for our entire road budget this last year. That included all of our crosswalks, all of our road striping, any, any type of asphalt work we had to do, any type of chip seal. Our entire budget was $150,000. So I just want to show you what this, these two roads are going to cost. The city of La Center, if we receive the grant, you'll be paying a 10% portion of this cost. But just as an example, to show you what a cost comparison is, if we look at, if we look at West 10th Street, and I picked these two roads because these are heavy truck traffic roads, and if anybody has traveled on these roads, you'll see that there's heavy alligator, allergating going on there, and there's also rutting in the roads. That's where you have indentation in the roads where the asphalt has compacted in the subgrade underneath. So it does, they do need some, some major work. So what I did was, I looked at these two roads, and the 10th, West 10th Street is approximately 900 feet long, and it's a 24-foot width. And so, lane width, remember, I'm talking lane width, so you'd have two lanes. So when you're looking at this, what you would do is if you're looking at the difference in the cost comparison of a chip seal, a grind and overlay, or a full-depth reclamation, you'd be looking at a cost of $12,000 if you chip sealed it. You'd look at a cost of $60,000 if you did a grind and overlay, or you'd look at a cost of $86,000 if you're going to do a full-depth reclamation. Now, if you scroll up, up on this PowerPoint a little bit, I want to tell you what this does not include, right there. Nope. Keep, go to, go to the next slide, and at the very top, right there, nope. Go to the last slide, and I need everybody to see the very top. Right, where it says, nope, yep, right there. Okay, it says sample of road. Everything I'm giving you in this sample is only for the material cost of the road. It does not include mobilization of your contractor, which is about 10%, your construction management, which is when you go out there and you make sure that they're doing it to code and to WASH standards. Doesn't include the design, the engineering design to be able to get it to go out to bid. Doesn't include the construction management. Doesn't include any contingency if you run into something when you're tearing up the road or doing something where you run into where you have to do something with your curbing gutter, drainage, anything like that. It doesn't include any of that. So this is actually only material costs. So if, if the contractor bids on this, they said, okay, here's our material costs. So now if you go back down to the bottom again. So when I'm looking at these prices of the 12,000, 60,000, and the 86,000, that's only your actual material costs when we're looking at this road comparison. So your estimated construction contract cost, if somebody were to bid this job, is about 240,000 for a grind and overlay to do West 10th Street alone. Then in, in addition to that, when you have your engineering, your mobilization, your construction management, the whole total cost, it comes up to about $387,000 to do only West 10th Street. And I think it's critical that I point these, these options out to you because I want people to understand how expensive it is to do roadwork, and it's not just like, oh, well, we had $100,000 in our budget, we should be able to get five roads done. Just to do 900 linear feet with 24-foot lanes, you're looking at a cost of 387,000. That is three times the amount of what you guys had budgeted in your, your road budget this year. So then if you look over at Aspen, which is your main trucking route, which is East 4th Street, from, from East 4th Street to West 10th Street, that's about a 1,400-foot distance, and it's, I'm using a 36-foot width because we have turn lanes, so on and so forth. It's a wider road. So if you look at that, and I'm looking at the grind and overlay, you can see the other, other information right there in front of you, so I'm not going to read it. But if I'm looking at the grind and overlay, overlay alone, you have to take the price and multiply it times one and a half times because it's a wider road. So your lanes are wider for the truck traffic. So that's looking at a cost of $140,000 for the grind and overlay that I submitted for this grant application. So your contract cost, when it comes in for bid, will probably come in at about $420,000. And then by the time you figure out your estimated cost for your engineering, your construction management, your contingency, so on and so forth, you're looking at about a cost of $680,000 to do that road. So this is examples for why I, why I believe, as the Public Works Community Development Director, it is important that you don't put all of this upon your own citizens to be able to pay for. I think it's good that you reach out to the people who are using the community and, and reach out to those people who are paying that tax base within the community to be able to help support some of this cost, since they're driving on the roads as well. This would include all your truck traffic that comes in, anything they deliver here. They'd be paying a portion of that cost for that Transportation Benefit District. I, I thought it was critical that you guys would know that. Another thing I wanted to explain to you is that before Brian left, he actually went out and he hired a company through I-Works that did an inventory of every single road within the city of La Center, and they graded the roads. And so when you grade a road, you, in this particular case, they grade it from zero to 20, zero meaning that the road's shot, it's basically crush, crush base, 20 meaning it's in a great condition, you don't have to do anything for it. The 20 means also, obviously, that you probably have a good 20-year lifespan on the road because it's a brand-new, brand-new road without having to do just some minor maintenance on it. So in the particular case of La Center, when I tallied up all the roads and I looked at their rating, basically, the, the current remaining service life of 74% of your roads is 12 years or less. So you have basically 45 lane miles. There's 31 miles of roads in the city of La Center, approximately. So we have about 64 lane miles that are, that are at 74% or less that need to have repaired done, meaning they're at 50% of their lifespan. And then if you want to look at what are under that 50%, you have, you have 43% of your roads are under the 50% lifespan, and you have 17% that are at the end of their lifespan of the roads here in the city of La Center. So if you just want to look at chip seal alone and say, well, we're just going to chip seal it because we don't have a lot of money in our budget, and you want to look at your 64 lane miles at a chip seal alone, you're looking at about a cost of $3, $3.2 million. And then by the time you add your construction, and that's just for the material, material alone, and then by the time you add your construction costs, your contract management services and putting it out to bid, you're looking at about a cost of $9.58 million to do what's existing on the roads that are failing in Wood, in La Center at this time. So I just wanted to give, I wanted to give the public an estimate of what was done. We have pictures of the roads, we have descriptions of the roads, we have linear feet, we have the length, we have the width, we have the addresses, we have anything and everything that you want to know about those roads, and we have that all in a spreadsheet, and we're starting to track them. So my goal is, whatever money is allotted towards roads, I'm going to start with the worst road and work my, and work my way down the list so as fast as I can. But I will go out for grants on some of the major thoroughfares, which is our truck route right here, which I already went out for a TIB funding on that for West 10th and Aspen from 4th to 10th Street. So I'll do the best I can to get grant dollars, but with your grant dollars on these two roads alone, you're looking at needing $225,000 to be able to match a grant, and you guys only had $150,000 budgeted last year, so you wouldn't even be able to afford the grant on these roads based on what your current budget was last year when I came into office. So I just wanted to give you guys a heads up of what's going on, and then leave it open for questions if anybody had any questions during the comment period.
Thank you, Tracy. Any questions?
My question is, is if you do the lesser expensive one, what's the length of time that it lasts compared to doing the more expensive one, which would seem like it would be better?
Yeah. Yeah, so you're talking about a chip seal versus a grind and overlay versus a full-depth reclamation. Your full-depth reclamation, which is your most expensive, you should, if you don't have heavy truck traffic, you have regular residential traffic, you should get approximately 20-year lifespan. A grind and overlay, you should get at least probably a solid 10-year lifespan, 12 years. Your chip seal, you're going to get five years out of.
Okay, thank you.
And this all is dependent on traffic. What kind of, what kind of vehicle traffic is on it? If it's a little short residential drive that nobody drives on it, or if it's a main street like the truck route, that's the difference in your lifespans.
Well, we had a lot of traffic, obviously, that was going up and down Aspen for the housing that was built on the other end of Aspen, other end compared to where the city is.
Well, and I even look at 4th. Look at, I mean, I can't even get out of the office after hours, and we're even talking, if I'm there at 6 o'clock, I can hardly even pull out of the parking lot without sitting there for a couple minutes because 4th Street is just non-stop traffic back and forth. So you got school buses on it, you got all different types of truck traffic. Anytime you have trucks or school buses, you're going to, you're not going to get as much wear on your roads. If you look at, a, a prime example is if you're driving down an interstate, and you drive along Interstate 5, if you look at the truck lanes in comparison to the, the left-hand lane where you can go fast, they're always repairing the truck lane for rutting and the middle lane versus the far-left lane, because those get the more wear and tear from trucks and vehicles as far as in those two lanes, so.
So Tracy, do you know if this is, I mean, I know you're newer to the city, but do you know if historically, we've always had, like, is this just an oversight? Or has there always been a deficit with our budgets for roads?
Well, yeah, so it's my understanding that there has not been a road fund until last year, and Maria and/or mayor, you can correct me if I'm wrong. It's my understanding that the first time there was a line item for the road fund was last year. But I also don't want to freak everybody out. I want to let you know that smaller municipalities are notorious for not having funding for maintenance of the roads, and it's because smaller municipalities heavily rely on their citizens. But there's ways to get around that, and this Transportation Benefit District is one way to get around that because we don't get the money like the major cities do, because you get your money from your state and your feds based on your population. If you have a very small population, you get a very small amount of money. But what happens is when you go out for grants, they will play favoritism for you. The first couple of years you do it, but then after that, they expect you to be fiscally responsible and have money in the pot. So if you decide to go out for grants, they want to see where your money's coming from and that you have established a road fund, and you have a way of collecting revenue for your roads within your municipality, or they won't give you funding.
So now that, you know, you're aware of the situation, I think that the best thing is to look forward at how we stop this, not just for tomorrow, but in the far future as well, right? We, we start planning for that. And that's what Tracy's brought to our attention on creating that fund, is to actually help. It's not the cure-all, but it's definitely a step in the right direction.
And that would show that we are trying to be fiscally responsible.
Is it possible to do a combination of these things? Like, you know, chip seal on some of them that are above the 75%? Do grind and overlay on the ones that are below the 50%?
Yeah, you can absolutely mix it up whichever way you want. What I usually do is I go out and I evaluate the road. I used to be able to piggyback, piggyback on county contracts. I'll check with Clark County because they get a much better pricing for chip seal. They come and put a stockpile of gravel in, and then they'll come out and do it for us. So we actually don't have to go out to bid because we have a, an agreement with the counties that allows to piggyback on their pricing when they put out to bid, so you get better pricing on it. I did a lot of that in my previous municipalities. But I just want people, you, you will end up getting complaining from citizens because they don't understand how the cost structure is based, and you're trying to do the best you can with the little money you have. So it is a very good idea to chip seal the roads that aren't far gone yet. When you see a lot of, we use a lot of, let me think of it, I'm having a brain fart right now. Tar in the road, blah, blah, blah. Anyway, I can't think of it. But when you go out and you see, you see a lot of alligator cracking and we're filling that in, that would be the best road to go ahead and try to chip seal when you're just starting to see that at the very beginning because it'll maintain your road for a few years until you can actually go and say, now I got to get this road on, on the, the plan. So we have, like I said, we have about 70% of the roads that we need to work on. And sometimes it's better to just do a big stretch. Like this will take, this road right here, this will take out, I think I have one, two, three, four, five segments of roads, because you kind of look at your roads in segments, like from one street to another street, another street to another street. And one other thing I want to let you know to council members and citizens is that anytime you go for a grant, if you have a curb and gutter and you have ADA accessibility, especially with TIB funding, which is what I went for, if your ADA ramps are not to code, they absolutely require you to put them up to code. So in this particular stretch for these two roads, I have 13 ADA ramps that I have to get up to code in order for them to give us funding if they allow us a grant. So we'll be tearing out some sections of curb and ramps to be able to meet the ADA accessibility. And then also, what we're required to do is we're required to have an ADA plan for our roads, and I'm working on getting one of those developed before the end of the year, too, because that, some of that is part of federal funding if you ever go out for federal grants.
How much does an ADA ramp cost?
We just did those two.
About, about $10,000. $10,000 to $15,000, depending on the ramp itself, per ramp.
Also, I have a question, Tracy, on, when I was reading over the Resolution 482 today, where it says, "Whereas the ordinance to form the Transportation Benefit District will grant the authority to impose a 0.1% sales tax or to impose a vehicle tab." I thought some other paperwork we looked at last council meeting was 0.01%.
It's one tenth of a percent. It's one tenth of a percent.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Sorry, I had a tickle there in my throat. And then also, not only is the sales tax, but there's something else you can look at, too. We have a lot of new residents coming in. There is a vehicle tab fee. I, I don't really recommend doing that right at the get-go, but as your population goes up, your $5 vehicle tab fee could be beneficial in getting you caught up. So you could put that in place for a few years. And again, all of that has to go to a road fund. So you have to have a GL account set up. You put all that money, it goes in the road fund, and it can only be spent on roads. So that's kind of the cool thing. It's, it's a guarantee for the citizens, that's where the money's going.
So I guess moving forward, I mean, we definitely need to look at this in our upcoming budget season here. I mean, as far as allocating more funds, you know, applying for those grants, establishing the TBD so we can kind of get on top of this, is that what you're?
Yeah, I actually have a couple different game plan items, too. We, we're allowed to use some REIT funding for maintenance. I think if we get these grants, I'm going to have to tap into some of those for our maintenance dollars. One thing that, that, that the transportation impact fees that we receive from all the, all of the new development that comes in, we cannot use those for maintenance, which kind of stinks. It would be nice to be able to use your transportation impact fee dollars for that, but we can use it for any new road. So if we have a section of road that doesn't go all the way through, I can build a new road to tie communities together or two lanes together. And there's a couple of those that I saw in town, too, that we need to extend those roads and. And there's a couple of those that I saw in town too, that we need to extend those roads and finish them up. Some I saw as I'm going on a Pacific Highway, there's a section where we have some right away for, for our future roads that just haven't been finished. So I'd like to use some of those transportation impact fees for that. And also we can use that for, for some certain grants that we get. Especially if we have to do sidewalks and we put new sidewalks in, we can use some of it for that if we're doing the road with it. So there's certain ways that we could finagle it. Also, there's some REIT dollars that we have that we can use a certain percentage of that for a road fund. And then we also have some storm dollars that we're collecting. And so I'm getting a little creative on that. So if I see an area in town where I see maybe a storm drain that isn't at, at the right grade, I can tear that up, replace the storm drain, and then I have to repave that area. So that'll help cover the costs. Some of the storm dollars can help cover some of the costs of the roads if we're in a situation like that. So there's, there's more than one way to skin a cat and kind of finagle the money. But I'm, I'm trying to think of creative ways to go outside the boxes. We look at the roads and where they're at and figure out how we're going to do that.
Right. And, and just for clarification, Tracy, just for the council and the residents sake, the complications and the legalities of what we could use different funds for, that is stemming from the state. That isn't a Lassiter municipal code, right?
Yeah, that's, that's 100% correct. It's you, when you collect dollars, you're only allowed to use them for certain things. Like you cannot use your sewer revenue for streets. You cannot use certain revenue that you bring in. So if we have sewer funds, I can't use it for anything unless I'm repairing a sewer line. Or if I, if I have storm water, I can only use, and you're collecting storm water fee on, on people's bills, you can only use it for storm water. But if that storm water repair includes having to pave around that, then you can use it for that. Or you have to replace the whole pipe because the pipe has collapsed, then you could do that. We ran into that when we did the, we did the Bentonite on Stone, is it Stone Creek? Stone Creek Drive? Is that right? Yeah. So when we did the Bentonite dam clay removals, when we got in there, the Bentonite clay had actually crushed our storm pipe. So we were able to use, you know, some of the funds because it's crushed the storm drain when we, we did that. So we can use some of the funding in that. It was a small change order. It was like, I think $900. But we didn't have to use that out of the road fund. We could have used that out of the storm fund because it was a crushed, crushed storm pipe.
And for clarification on cost on that, Tracy, this is the little, the bumps that you've seen going up Stone Hill?
Yeah.
Or Stone Creek?
Yeah.
What's the cost on that again? Just for the three or four?
Gosh, I don't remember. I'd have to look it up. I apologize.
13,000 or 19,000?
I, I honestly, I don't even remember. Maria might have a better idea than I do because she probably might have the budget in front of her.
To remove those bumps. Almost, yeah. I think, I believe it was like 19,000.
Who was our vendor? Grade Works?
No.
Okay. Not off the top of my head.
Yeah. I might be able to look it up while we have questions. Or public comment, I might be able to look that up and, and give you that feedback.
I, I just wanted them to hear the cost of something that was so small.
Minor.
What turned up. Yeah.
I'll go, I'll go, I'll start to look it up.
Any other questions for Tracy? This is just a presentation. This is not.
Yeah, I was just going to ask, when is the? Say, we'll talk more about this as we?
No, that's, that's tonight.
Oh, later. Right, right, right. I just went like.
No further questions.
I meant.
Thank you for your information.
We'll further talk about the budget of the roads is what I mean.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
I just wanted to make sure that. Apologize.
Sorry, Tracy. Do you have something else?
I, yeah, I just want to make sure that when people are making decisions, that you have the information in front of you to make an educated decision. And if you don't want to go this route and know you do not want to do the transportation benefit district, then my, my question would be, where would you want to see the funds coming from? Because you're going to have to pull them from somewhere if you want to maintain your roads. So I just want to make sure you had the information in front of you so you knew what the costs were. So you, if you don't want to go this route, you can figure out another way to go, but you had that information in front of you.
Thank you, Tracy. Any other questions, council? All right. Tracy, thank you for coming in on your day off. Definitely appreciate it.
No problem. And I'm going to stay here during public comment just in case anybody has questions that I might be able to answer if you need anything from me.
Well, perfect timing. Next up, citizens' public comments. Clerk, can you please call up any public comments from the audience?
Kimberly Elbin.
Hi, this is Zisane.
Yes.
Kimberly Gohean Elbin, Patriot Life Citizen of Clark County, Washington, USA. So this is a copy of the agenda for your planning commission that I didn't attend yesterday. It was this, and then you get a chance to click on Agenda Packet. And this was the only thing on the packet. I don't find it very transparent or anything. There's really actually nothing to click on. I also want to say also, no more GMA. We don't want any more growth here in Lassiter. We're going to have to have a four lane bridge. I mean, really, folks, it's, we're out of control. We're not in an area where we want to be a city. We are a town. Let's keep it that way. And tonight, all of this, what they're going to do is directed towards moving to be in a larger city, of which I don't think we want. So on your 1.6.1, your consulting agreement, this actually is Honeywell Government Affairs. It's a business. They want to grow. They also will be, they are a legislative advocacy program and they lean left. That's all I can say about that. Also, well, I'll mention later, you know, on some, some of your checks and payable stuff, we're, we're paying to Oregon, the Teamsters, we're paying to Oregon Department of Revenue. I don't get it. Somebody needs to look that up. I can't do everything, you know, for that. We just want to make sure everything's, you know, kosher and right. But I would like to answer, so. I know the mayor of Yakalt's here and in, in his council, which I believe is very close to constitutional, people get to talk. When the presenter is done presenting, the people get to ask questions. And that's what this is about. But council, people in your council here, and especially Clark County, are suppressing we, the people through our First Amendment rights, and I resent it. Again, the, you're going to follow, this one guy's going to follow the Association of Washington Cities. It's a, it's a leftist group again. Vancouver of whom is a sanctuary city is a member of that. We don't want that. We don't need that. We're, we're the boss of our own cities. Let's just do that. Transportation Benefit District, they mentioned it. It's going to raise your taxes. And there's a lot of things on that. They're going to do more fees and stuff. There is a meeting on September 25th. I'll mention that. One main thing that I do really want to mention, the Association of Washington Cities also mentions the word democratize. That means that they want us to, the government to rule over the people. We're a republic. We are not a democracy. We use democracy. We are a republic here in America. That's what I stand for. Again, on August 27th, the Clark County Council, and I'm asking, begging people to understand it's your duty, thank you, to attend these meetings, whether you call, write, whatever you can. You have got to get involved in Clark County. They just passed on August 27th, the fact that the PUD now.
For reasons to identify and traffic control.
Next public comment is Carmen De Leon.
Thank you, Kimberly. Next comment? Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Carmen De Leon. Is it on? You got me? You got it on? Yeah. Carmen De Leon, and I go by Mello. It's my nickname. I live in Vancouver, Washington, 1816, 1817 East Mill Plain Boulevard. And I was here once before. I really, can you hear me okay? Okay. So I just want to let you know, it's making me really sad to see that you guys need money for doing this and doing that when Vancouver's been given a billion dollars for, for creating whatever the hell they want, really. They want to make a, they had private closed sessions. And in those sessions, the, the mayors and all the city council that I'm seeing, there's no city manager here. But they were saying that they want to be bigger than Tacoma. They want to go from 200,000 to 500,000 in the city of Vancouver. And that's why I'm like, well, what about you guys? You guys are all going to be affected. Look at, look at, you're already having problems with the road. Who's bringing it in? Maybe 200 or 300,000 new residents in Vancouver they're, they're pigeon for because that's what they want. They made it very clear. And that is the goal, is 500,000 to be bigger than Tacoma. They said they want the voter power of the state will be the strongest voter power if Clark County becomes whatever. And that's what also makes me sick because I was in Clark County when that Cherry Mudbine guy, that guy up there who, when you disagree, like, if you don't like what I'm saying, he will say, shut up and security, remove you. And so they'll have me literally, like she said, suppressing us when I, he's out there going, oops, we gave a million dollars extra to Comcast. And then the firemen's over there asking for $700,000. Why isn't the fireman getting the money? They accidentally gave Comcast an extra million. Why? Why is Comcast so important? Because it's the brainwash for all of society. You have to have your brainwash, which is television news, your telephone. You got to be plugged in, which in the other county commission thing, we determined that obviously the obvious is when a natural catastrophe comes, a hurricane, a bad hailstorm, whatever, the first thing to go is your electricity and your cell phone and all that goes down. So that's why we got to get back to basics. And like I, you know, I'm already running out of time. But I'm just saying, the money's there. They got a billion dollars for building. And I called today to make sure this is part of Clark County. So how is it that they have a billion and you don't have a damn 100,000 for a road? That's ridiculous. And they have 300, what is it, 319,000 dollars for a city manager? Why do they need a mayor? City manager's getting 300 and something thousand dollars. There's 360 days in a year. That guy has to live off a thousand dollars a day almost. I think the city of Vancouver has gone hog wild. They have threatened to arrest me just for talking like I'm talking to you right now. If I said something offensive, should I go to jail? Because Mayor Oglo, whatever her name is, wants me there. She's crazy.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Celeste Monroe.
Celeste Monroe, 2142 East Gather. I could not have planned this better if I tried. Last night, my husband and I went to planning commission. And as you guys know, we had some concerns, particularly about traffic and road conditions when we were coming and talking to you about Vineyard Vista. So some of the things that we're concerned about are traffic calming things, speeding, stopping at stop signs. I'll be the first one to admit that if I'm not paying attention, I find myself speeding and find myself not stopping at stop signs. But one of the bigger concerns that we have is that we have no restrictions over these large trucks that can travel on our neighborhood streets. And as Tracy just pointed out, they are the biggest concern from a damaging perspective. And because, I didn't know it was called alligator cracking, but I learned something new tonight. You just have to drive along almost any city street in Lassiter and you see all of that. I thought it was abstract art. But one, one of the things that my husband did and that, you know, we, we think we, we proposed this to the planning commission last night, is that you can, through code, right, implement weight restrictions and traffic calming measures. Battleground, we did at the suggestion of one of the planning commissioners, we did some pretty extensive research for the state of Washington. I think this is complimentary to what you guys are talking about now. Because it's going to take a long time to get the money to do $10 million worth of repairs. This is more proactive, but you can, Battleground has comprehensive code that identifies, it, it actually has different street designations. So it'll tell you the difference between a neighborhood street and a thoroughfare, et cetera. It has restrictions for each one of those streets. It has, in addition to the restrictions, it then will have exceptions. So you know, if fire trucks, garbage trucks, et cetera, need to travel on those. Signage is probably your biggest incentive to change behavior. So if you have a sign at the beginning of a neighborhood that says this is a, a neighborhood, no trucks allowed, right, that will be a big deterrent to, to the trucks that we heard from Ruth last time when they were doing Stevens Hill. If they saw a bus going up Aspen, they turned either right on South View or Heritage and went right through the neighborhoods to get up to Stevens Hill. And then you can enforce it through citations. So if anybody actually does something that they shouldn't do, that citations can be implemented. So we, we, like I said, we looked at Battleground code. It is very, very comprehensive in this regard. It could probably be adopted here with some minor tweaking for, for our, our conditions. But it would, and between that and the signage, and then any kind of enforcement that we can do for people who aren't following the rules, we could go a long way to at least preserving our streets until we can get the money to fix them.
Thank you, Celeste. Thank you for the information.
Al Filla.
Al Filla, 36016 Northwest Jenny Creek Road. Wow. I wonder how that got there. Well, that's good information, you know. And, but of course, I think you all know how I feel about taxes. The same way you all felt when you were running. We don't need any more new taxes. You know? I suggest, you know what you do? Do what I have to do in my personal home is tighten the belt a little bit. You know, if you got discretionary funds that you can use on whatever you want, and I know the city has discretionary funds because I was told about those, you know? They could use that for road, but that wasn't the reason I came here. Tonight, I got this, the Center bullet. And we're talking about C-Trans. And I love C-Trans. You know, I've brought it up several times here. And I look here and it says, pick up, park, Tanniki, pick up, park and ride at Sixth and Birch. All that is is a vacant lot over there, folks. You know, just a couple of years ago, they had a park and ride across from Holly Park there. There's a great big, and they had a booth there that you could sit in and everything else. You know, so I'm going to suggest that they put that little booth back there because it'd probably be a lot cheaper. Now, again, it may be C-Trans is going to pay for that. But see, I look at it this way. That's still taxpayer money. Or the city's got to pay for it. Well, the right there, we saved a few bucks. You know, so. You know, Sixth and Birch, give me a break. I mean, I know several people in town have asked about buying that from the city. You know, and, you know, getting it into, getting city property into public domain so they can pay taxes on it. Gee whiz. Yeah, I'm for that. You know, whereas it being city property and not getting any property tax, you know? No, Al's not really big on that. Unless you can use it for something, you know, maybe somebody said, Al, bring up this. Maybe a community center could be built on that. Who knows? Thank you. God bless America.
Thank you, Al. And I don't normally answer questions on that. But I will let you know that C-Trans and I had met and we cannot get buses into that paper parking lot like they used to from what they had stated to us. So that was why that has been chosen over Sixth and Birch. And that'll be where cars can park and then the bus will be able to pick up people and take them. Hopefully that answers your question, Al.
I don't have the language for it.
No. No, because that was the same question we asked. Tracy and I asked, why can't we just go to where we were? Any others?
There are no more cars from the audience.
Dennis? No? All right. It's good to see you, by the way. Any public comments from those calling in? Please press star six to unmute yourself. State your name and address for the records. Clerk, do we have callers? Perfect. Are there any comments to be read, clerk?
There are no comments to be read.
Thank you. That brings up the consent agenda. If there are no requests for items to be removed, before I have a motion, I just wanted to make sure that you guys seen the GTH contract in there for 2025? You guys have any questions about that? Okay. If there are no requests for items to be removed, may I get a motion to approve?
So move.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion passes. Thank you, counsel. In February, Brian Cast and myself took a trip to Washington DC to ask for some help from the federal government for some of the projects that we have that are ongoing here in the city of La Center. At the end of July, beginning of August, I received a call from a young lady. And you know, it was on my phone and I, I normally answer it, this is Tom. This person actually said, uh, Mayor Tom Strobin, and it kind of caught me off guard. And I said, no, this is Tom. I work for a living. And she said, so do I. My name is Senator Patty Murray. She called to tell us that we have been given $2 million to help finish the Breezy Creek culvert replacement and widening project. It still has to go through senate approval for the budget. But I thought, you know, this is another nice addition and a perfect timing to actually bring it up to the public with questions of contractors and the GTH contract that was just passed tonight. I would like to extend a very big thank you to Senator Patty Murray for the $2 million and the opportunity for us to finish a project that has been long in the making. I would encourage anybody that would like to send her an email or something, or if you see her in public to thank her as well. That puts the city at almost $12 million in four months of grants and earmarks, which is very big for this little city. Onto more somber news. We, we are aware, you know, being a small city, we are aware of the graffiti that was hit at Holly Park. We're not sure who did it. I know that there's video and we're trying to look through things. All I ask is if you guys see anybody that's doing stuff like that, please turn them in. We, we, we have police. We have protections here. We're not without. I would like to get them caught and stopped because I, it's marking up our beautiful city. And, and it's causing work for Tracy and her department and they're doing the best they can. Give you a quick police update. The city has turned the contract back over to the police or to the sheriff's office. They're running through some of our corrections or changes that we've requested. And so that should be seeing its way to the county council by the end of the month, if not the beginning of October. And if you've noticed, we've got the signage on the building now. So, and it looks really, really good. Ah, perfect. Thank you, Alex. Doesn't that look good? Yeah. Turned out really nice. And that's actually metal up there.
Wow.
Yeah. Yeah, right?
Looks like a clipper.
Turned out really good. Uh, and if you've noticed that there are automatic gates on there. As soon as this contract is signed, there is plans to have a lot of activity out of that little station. Isn't that right, commander? Yeah. So, um, I just want to say thank you to Tracy and her team for getting the, the building up to par and getting it ready for the sheriff's office. With that, next up is our attorney's report. Janine, are you there? Is Janine on?
I, I am. I was just having some clicking trouble there. Um, so I don't have anything to report this afternoon or this evening, but I am happy to answer any questions. Um, so happy to help.
Any questions for the city attorney? No? I think we're good then, Janine. Thank you. Next up, council comments. Council member Fox.
Good evening. Glad to see everyone here. Um, I know you guys all think our town's growing so large and it is growing. I've been here since I was a child. But still, we only have a small percentage of people that come to meetings. So it really represents, you know, just my point is, is that we're still a very small town and that, you know, we are going to get overflow from battleground and Richfield and surrounding cities. And we're going to have a lot of people that are going to interested in moving here. And so as much as we don't want the town to grow, there's people that are going to be knocking on our doors and we have to make decisions. And you know, at the end of the day, um, we should be very fortunate to have the mayor that we do, to see the turnarounds that we've seen. I think we can all admit that this has been, you know, a good turnaround for us and the direction that we're going as a team, as a city, and that we're always doing the best we can with what we have. You guys can play clearly here that we can't spend money from different departments to pay for other things. So you know, without, I'm not saying we are doing a tax. We haven't even started that. I just know that that's something that the rumor, you know, this, you know, beginning of, but you know, if we want nicer roads, you know, we, the people who live here and spend the majority of our time, you know, we kind of need to pay for that. Um, and Celeste, I like what you shared. Those are good solutions because we are a community where we can come together to make solutions. It doesn't all have to be on our dime, but if we'd like to see nicer roads, we're going to have to make, you know, some changes. So at the end of the day, we're doing the best we can with what we have. We're here to listen and we want you guys to keep coming back with all your concerns. Obviously the growth needs to make sense and it needs to be healthy all as well. I just want to say for today being nine 11, that I hope everybody had some time to sit with themselves. Sorry. I just remember being, um, a junior in high school and sitting in Ms. Bryan's class during nine 11, being played on the TV. And I just remember sitting in class at La Center and just feeling so safe. I felt so safe watching that on TV as it was happening. And you know, as my kids go to that, go to La Center and you know, I live here and I just want to say that I've never felt safer. I love the city and I'm happy to represent you all. So thank you.
Thank you. Council member Casper?
Yeah, thank you. Um, I'm not even going to try to follow up on that. So thank you for those comments. I think we all feel very similar. I was actually just trying to look up the Clark County Council's agendas for the meeting coming up on the 17th. And it, they didn't have the, the, uh, county La Center contract on there yet. I was, thought it was going to be on that one, but I do believe it's coming up before the end of the month. I do think that we're going to see some changes, some additional benefits to win when that gets signed. But fundamentally, things will continue as they have been. I know they're looking at later this fall, getting the additional staffing that's part of the, uh, the contract. So, um, other than that, thank you. Appreciate you all being here.
Thank you. Council member Boyle?
Good evening, everyone. Um, I guess, I don't know. I don't have a whole lot to say tonight. It's great to see everybody. I really appreciate all the participation from our community. It was cool to see, I don't know who ended up taking care of it, but with the graffiti thing, I just through social media and stuff, I saw a lot of people. There was a lot of, you know, talk of, you know, what's happening, but there's also a lot of people willing to step up and help and, you know, try and fix the situation and, you know, help make it better. So I really appreciate those types of things. You know, with, we all have differing opinions on things and how things should be done. We're not anybody's adversary and I think we should, you know, continue to try to be unified as a community. Continue to work together through all of these issues, you know, whether we feel one way or another about them. We all have similar goals, I believe. It may not be exact, but, um, we're all just trying to keep moving in that forward direction. So that's all I got for tonight.
Thank you. Council member Layoff?
Well, September is a national suicide prevention month and hashtag be the one two is the 988 Suicide Crisis Lifelines message. And one of the messages is that you can talk to people, especially if it's someone that's a friend or a neighbor and they've indicated to you that they might harm themselves in the past or commit suicide. It's okay to ask them if they're okay. If just bringing it up isn't going to push them in to committing suicide. So I just say to be there for people if they're depressed to, um, you know, be able to talk to them and ask them if they're okay. That might just make them stop and think about it. You could direct them to a counselor or whatever help they might need. Second of all, I did attend a beautiful event this morning. That was at Vancouver City Hall that was from nine o'clock to 10 o'clock. Several good speakers and, um, just talking about, as the mayor talked about, nearly 3,000 victims died that day. But, uh, there was, um, firefighters, police and, uh, you know, citizens that was in that, those towers. 72 police died that day and 229 have died since from related diseases. One of them would be inhaling the dust that was flying in the air. So there was 413 first responders that included firefighters, police and paramedics that perished. So I think it's so important to not, not forget that. And one of the things that Chief of Police Moyer shared was that some of the police officers they're hiring now weren't even born when nine, nine 11 happened. So how quickly we could forget that and we need to not ever forget that. I want to point out that there's going to be, it was in the battleground reflector today. So you could check that out. There's going to be gather and feast farm. That's part of, uh, has a listener address. You can go there and, uh, you know, they have organic vegetables and they have the, the Scottish Highlander cattle. And it's just a neat place to go to. Um, I want to go visit it sometime. I grew up in the Midwest in a small town. So I, uh, all my relatives were farmers. So I've been on farms a lot. But I want to also mention that September 21st, there's going to be a ribbon cutting of those new businesses that are above the Chevron. And, um, that's going to be at 11 o'clock on that Saturday, September 21st. So everybody's invited. Um, and I hope lots of people will show up for that. We really want to give these new businesses here in town. We want to give them our business because we really appreciate that and we'd like, like to get more businesses. So I think that's, um, everything I've got for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Council member Serlin?
Thank you. And thank each and every one of you for attending this evening. It's always, um, very appreciative and, and we're very grateful to have your input and your presence and interaction on any and all of the activities going on in town. And, um, just bringing, uh, your perceptions and, uh, forward to us so that we can learn as we go and be a part of the solutions that the community comes together and creating. So thank you for your participation.
Thank you. You know, I didn't hear anybody say anything about the new flags in the roundabout. Did you guys all see them?
I did. Actually, I noticed today that they were at, at half staff, which I thought was, was really cool for the day. So I think they look great.
And I wanted to thank the Legion and Al and Jim and everybody for coming to, uh, fire the guns. I just wanted to see if anybody was going to say anything. It turned out beautiful. You come into this small town and you see flags and yellow ribbons and flowers and banners honoring the military. And you come around that corner and you just see the monster flags up there. Yeah, absolutely stunning. All right. Sorry for my tangent. We do have the staff report tonight, the administrative services staff report. Ms. Maria Swinger Enske will be presenting. Maria?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. To tack on to your banner comment, we do, we are ready to place another order if we get one more banner. So if you know of anybody who, uh, would like a banner or you'd like to sponsor a banner for somebody, all that information is on our website. First up is the sales tax. Uh, we continue to see a strong sales tax revenue. We are up over last month and then also up over where we were a year ago. Next up is population. And so talking about increase and all the people that are coming into town, we have our 2024 numbers. So we had a 3.99% increase. And so we have surpassed that 4,000 resident mark as of April. And then I always like to compare to surrounding cities. So I usually throw Bridgefield up there. So they had a 4.02% increase. So right in line with where we are, and they now stand just shy of 16,000 residents. And I do want to make note to everybody that we have changed the November and December council dates because of the holidays. So we will meet, uh, the second council meeting of those months have been changed. So in November, we will meet on the 20th and in December, we will meet on the 18th. So the first, uh, council meeting will remain the same. So we'll just meet back to back during those months. And then staff continues to get trained. So Riley will be at the WFOA conference next week in Yakima. That's the Finance Officer Association Conference. And then Desi recently attended a training about, uh, ethics for policy writing. And then our gambling tax revenue, we had, um, 114,000 this past month, which is down over what we've seen in recent months, but it is in line with, uh, what we saw last year. So it looks like, um, even though it's on August, it's what they made in July. So as of course, we expect summer months to probably be a little bit slower. And that is all I have tonight. Are there any questions?
Any questions? Do we need to have a celebration for 4,000 or should we not talk about that?
At 5,000, we have to expand y'all, y'all up there.
Any questions for Maria? Thank you, Maria. Great report. Appreciate it. We do have a couple of resolutions in ordinance tonight. Resolution 481 surplus property. Ms. Maria Swinger Enske will be presenting again. Maria?
Thank you. So we did this a couple of years ago as well, but we continue to clean up and get our buildings organized. And so we do have, uh, some items that are, we are sending to surplus with your approval. The total of the items are less than $50,000. Therefore, we will not need a public hearing. We just need council's approval. And the, uh, agency that we are going through is called the Public Group. They're a local auction house. And so the way that it'll work is they'll come out, they will inventory all of our items, which are on the exhibit there. And then it will be open for community members if they would like to purchase it. We will, once that auction is live, we will post it on our website and then we will also post it on social media. And you will go through them to do the purchase. You won't, you know, come to city hall and say, hey, I want, you know, a box of folders. Everything will be, everything will be done through them. So, uh, the resolution tonight is, uh, on the screen there. He'll scroll down to it. If you'd like to make a motion to send all of these items to auction. There are also a couple of, of vehicles, old vehicles, um, rec recreational vehicle, I think is on there, mower. So yeah.
There's some good stuff on there.
Please buy it.
Yeah, please. I move to approve resolution 481 as presented.
Second.
It's been moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Resolution passes. Thank you, counsel. Next up is resolution 482, transportation benefit district, uh, formation. This will be presented by our city attorney, Janine Parker. Janine?
Yes, hello. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. So first I wanted to just apologize for not having a, a staff, a report and summary for you. I'm, I'm kind of new to the process here, so, um, I'll do my best to explain it and then I'm happy to answer any questions. So at the workshop on August 28th, the council heard a presentation on transportation benefit districts. In part to address a lot of the things you heard about, uh, earlier in this council meeting from the public works director about the transportation needs of the city. So based on the feedback from city council at that workshop, we have, um, a resolution for you tonight that will begin the first step of the process, which is to have a public hearing on the formation of the district. So staff has prepared a resolution, uh, for you to consider tonight. And that resolution is just acknowledging your intent to consider forming the district and to set a public hearing to hear testimony on the formation of that district. So the reasons why the city is considering the transportation benefit district at this time are the, the costs of road repairs described earlier. And the fact that one of the options for this is a, a sales tax option, which will, which would generate income based on sales, not, not just of the citizens of La Center, but for those people who come into the city to shop. And so it, it kind of spreads that over a broader area or has the potential to if council decided to take that option. So a transportation benefit district is authorized under RCW 3673 and it is the formation of a separate taxing district. But then that district, the, the governance of that district will actually be incorporated into the city and the city council will be the governing body. And then the taxing district boundaries would have the same boundaries as the, as the city limits of the city of La Center. I'm just gonna look at my notes here. So the formation of the district, so the, the first step is to, to pass the resolution and to authorize the setting of the public hearing. And then the next step would be to bring an ordinance to council that forms the district after that public hearing. And then importantly, that ordinance does not actually impose any of the taxes or fees that are authorized. However, it will authorize certain level of fees to be imposed by the council. And then it authorizes additional amounts to be submitted to the voters for approval. So there's like, there's, there's two levels of financing that you can use the district for. One, one that council votes in and one that the, that the, that the voters of the community vote in. So the resolution before you tonight will bring the ordinance to form the district to the September 25th meeting and give you the opportunity to hear from citizens at that time. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions or present whatever information that you would like on the, the districts as well. So please let me know if you have any questions.
One of my questions is that, does this also include when, my understanding, when there, there's building going on and a, and a truckload of materials are bought, say from Home Depot or Lowe's or something and dropped off, then we get a percentage? If we pass this, then we get a percentage of that?
So I'm not
Yes, that is correct. Yes. So we currently do get sales tax for that. We would just be getting the additional amount. So all the building that happens that we get sales tax on, it would be an additional amount.
Okay. I have a comment.
Please, Tracy.
So you only get it if you voted in. This is only for the formation of the transportation benefit district. That's what we're starting with. After you form the district, you have multiple options to be able to pass different types of items when you form the district to be able to collect revenue. One of them is being that one tenth of a percent that is allowed to be voted in by the council members only. And that would allow for what you're speaking of, council member, that if somebody brings in a load from Home Depot, they would pay a certain percentage, one tenth of one percent on their delivery to La Center. In addition to the one tenth of one percent that the council is allowed to vote in without a vote of the citizens, you can go out to vote with the citizens and ask for an additional tab fee. And you could also ask for an additional one tenth of one percent. So you're paying two tenths of one percent if they voted in. So right now, this is just the formation of the transportation benefit district at the next council meeting. Once a formation occurs, then it's up to council to decide if they want to vote in the one tenth of one percent at a following meeting without going to vote because they are allowed to do that. If they want additional funds outside of the one tenth of one percent, then you would go to a vote to the public and see if they want to add that to allow you to have two tenths of a percent for taxed revenue base for your roads in the city. And if you wanted to do something in additional to that, you could put it out to vote to have an additional $5 license tab fee for anybody who lived within the city limits, that that would go out to vote to bring additional revenue in. So that's kind of what you're looking at. You're just looking at the formation. Then you could vote for the one tenth. You could go out to vote for the other one tenth. You can go out to vote for the tabs. And based on the one tenth of a percent that you bring in, it would be about approximately $65,000 a year that would go into your road fund based on our current tax revenue.
And Tracy, that's just for maintenance for roads in, in the city?
It only goes for maintenance of roads. That is correct.
Thank you.
And just to refresh my memory as well, Tracy, there was a, there's a benefit or a must to have this district form in order to qualify for certain things too, right?
What it does is it's not so much a qualification as a, we as the city are being fiscally responsible when we go out to obtain grant dollars to show that we're collecting our revenue to maintain our roads and be able to have matching funds without taking it out of the general fund all the time. It shows that you are working on your roads and your preservation and you have a game plan.
And mayor, if I can just make one quick clarification. So the, the, the one tenth of one percent is correct, but I believe that the, that the voters can go up to three tenths. So, so I think Tracy mentioned that they could do an additional one tenth to go up to two, but I think you could, you can actually go up to three. So that would be up to what the council would want to put out to the voters. And then I think there is some amount of the vehicle tab fee that the council can, can impose. I'm just looking at the statute here now. But then to, to go above that amount would, would then have to go out to the voters. And I'm not finding that right off the top of my, of my, my review here, but I'll make sure that I have that at the meeting when you're considering the ordinance so that I can be sure and address that. But I think, I think you can do like 20 tabs or $20 tabs initially, but then, then there are other requirements if you want to go above that. So those are the, the clarifications that I have on the, the funding sources.
Okay. Thank you, Janine. Thank you, Tracy. Any questions for the city attorney or for Tracy concerning this resolution?
No.
If so, can I get a motion? Entertain a motion?
I move to approve resolution number 482.
I second that.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Resolution passes. Thank you, council. Thank you, Tracy and Janine for all your work on this. We do appreciate it. And Tracy, just so you know, I just want to make sure we're not in trouble because every time you're talking up there, the way it's coming across the speakers, it sounds like you're yelling at us. That's what the council was up here talking about.
I probably am yelling at you and I don't mean to.
You're not yelling. You're just a fireball.
I'm just so excited. Yes. Okay. I'll, I'll turn my, my volume down.
Thank you again, Tracy. Next up, we have ordinance 2024 dash zero nine, amending 2.52 exempt employees. Ms. Maria Swinger Enske will be presenting.
Good evening again. So this is just another one of those cleaning up our code. And so tonight, this ordinance is asking for two things. So we are updating the exempt positions that are in our code. And so the reason we're doing this is because we have our audit coming up here in the fall. And so our positions need to be in line with the contracts that we have. We added two new exempt employees last year. That was our public work supervisor and our wastewater treatment plant supervisor. And they are exempt, but were not listed in our code. And then in addition to that, we have some other positions. So we have community development director was not included. That is part of Tracy's job right now. And then my position, administrative services director was not in there. So we're adding that. And then also it includes a possible future positions, which would be HR manager, supervisor or a director. And so, and then also community development director is part of Tracy, but in the future, you know, if that got separated out into its own position, it is included there separately. And then we also have our city engineer was not included and currently our city engineer holds the title of also our assistant public works director. So those positions are in there separately. So that's the first part. And then the second part is the code includes the amount of administrative leave that the exempt employees get. And it says 96 hours and that is not the amount that the exempt employees get. They get less than that. And so the attorney had recommended and he's, this was our prior attorney, said that the administrative leave is part of your personnel policy. It's not something that really should be in code. And so we are requesting tonight to remove that from the code and then we will include it in our personnel policy, which will come in the next couple of months for you guys to look at and to approve as well. So I'll open it up for questions and then we will also do a public hearing.
Thank you, Maria.
Yes.
Any questions? All right. So you know, so how there's no questions? I would like to open up the public meeting at 7:49. If there's any public comments from the audience, please step up. Any public comments from the, from those calling in? Please press star six to unmute yourself, state your name for the record. Clerk, are there any public comments to be read?
There are no comments to be read.
Anybody from the audience would like to speak? All right. Just wanted to make sure. All right. The time is 7:50. At this time, I'd like to close the public hearing and turn this back over to council. Council, any questions or comments or conversation amongst each other? If not, can I get a motion for this ordinance?
I make a motion to approve ordinance 2024 dash zero nine by adding the positions and titles to LCMC section 2.52.010 and remove section 2.52.060 administrative leave.
Second.
It's been moved in second. This is an ordinance clerk. Can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilor Fox?
Yes.
Councilor Boyle?
Yes.
Councilor Casper?
Yes.
Councilmember Leha?
Yes.
Councilmember Servini?
Yes.
Ordinance passes. Thank you, council. Thank you, Maria and your team for the hard work on that. But I know that was painstaking. Council, is there any unfinished business? Or any new business that you'd like to discuss? If not, can I get a motion for adjournment?
So move.
Second.
Moving seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Abstained. Motion passes. Thank you, council. Thank you, everyone for attending. Have a great night.